As I always say, the sooner we start, the sooner we finish. And I want to get out of here. It's about two minutes past seven. We'll open tonight's meeting. We have two hearings and we have a bit of business before the hearing. Let me start my recorder. I need to ask if anybody is making an audio recording. Seeing none, Kathy and I both make audio recordings and Lake Kim's made our video recording. Our first bit of business, I think, must have been assigned to look at the minutes.
I would like to make a motion to accept the minutes as written, according to the 16th.
Motion's been made to approve the minutes as presented. Is there a second to Dave's motion?
Yes, second.
There was a second to the motion. Any further discussion on the 16th minutes? We're in all favor of this.
I agree.
I'm opposed. Stay in those hours. All in favor? One percent. Grissom stands. Okay. Nate, you have some business you want to conduct with us tonight.
So, as you guys probably know, we've established a zoning bylaw review advisory committee in Lake City along through our bylaws, looking at issues that we have and whether we can make any changes. One that's recently come up is the seasonal bylaw. We call out summer seasonal residences being residents with a substandard septic. There's a provision in there for conversion. And we just wanted to come to the zoning, what of appeals meeting tonight and discuss the bylaw and ask if you guys saw a benefit to having the bylaw in there. It's a useful tool as you wish, special permits and whatnot. If it's something that you would consider actually removing it and handing over to the board.
Well, my take on it is that our only role is conversion of, when someone asks to convert a dwelling from a seasonal status to a year-round status. And according to the bylaw as written now, it says that it really requires Board of Health approval. And I believe in the definitions, it says something about meeting septic requirements, which again is Board of Health. So it's a little bit vague in a sense that the ball bounces back and forth between Board of Health and us. And not that that's a problem, but in my opinion, if it's going to remain, if part of the responsibility would remain with the zoning board, I think we should add a lot of clarity and a lot of detail to the definition so we know what a summer residence is and we know what a seasonal residence is. The bylaw implies it the same thing, but they could be different. As your grandfather told me years ago, an ice fisherman on Long Pond could have a seasonal residence, cottage where he comes down just to do some ice fishing in the winter. That's certainly not a summer residence. And so there needs to be some definition around, some detail around, perhaps some requirements, some structural and engineering requirement, what both the Board of Health and the zoning board would have to look for to consider approval, of course. And we don't really have that. So either we, on the one hand, have to, in my opinion, have to very much embellish and enhance our definitions and our requirements, or on the other hand, turn it over completely to the Board of Health and let our friends on that side of the fence grapple with the issue. Bob?
It's become an issue where, as you know, the shores got getting year-round water now. Right? So there's hundreds of houses that were always considered seasonal because by our definition they didn't have year-round water. Well, now they're getting year-round water. With year-round water, they can put a septic system in anywhere they want. So we have started a process, and none of this went through us. This was all DEP and the Saltman. But we triggered, we started a process so people, if they get the water turned on year-round, that's why at town meeting, we've got a few million dollars to lend to people to put septic systems in. We're trying to get them all to upgrade, but that's all we have control. So any D restriction the Board of Health put on for seasonal was based on that they didn't have year-round water or they didn't have a septic system. But you guys have put a bunch on over the years also, and we can't take those off. So that's why we're here tonight, trying to figure out, you know, what we're going to do with those other people. That they may have put an addition on, but you put a, see, a board, not your personal, put a seasonal restriction on because what's the process if they want to take it off?
We don't put a seasonal restriction on. The seasonal restriction occurred in town hall on those dwellings years ago when someone made a magic list.
Yeah. Well, those never counted. Those never got recorded. That magic list never got recorded. But I was understanding that you guys have also put seasonal restrictions on over the years.
We don't put seasonal restrictions on. We sometimes put restrictions on homes that, I don't recall ever putting a seasonal restriction on. Haven't?
Yeah. In the instance where the Board of Health sends a memo about a certain petition, in the past, the zoning Board of Appeals has mirrored that in their conditions. So in the conditions section, it's seasonal use only. I think you might remember, Bill Garvey ran into that on Twin Oaks where the Board of Health had a seasonal D restriction. He was going for a special permit to raise and rebuild his house. In the special permit to raise and rebuild, there was a seasonal condition. Bill had to go to the ZBA, hold a public hearing, get it taken off. So we, there are some out there still with seasonal D restrictions. Larry did a lot of letters to the zoning Board of Appeals saying that it needed to be seasonal. So we need a mechanism to still take that off, to Bob's point, but...
To your point, to take it off in order to make them year-round?
Yeah. Yeah, or to rescind the seasonal D restriction or the condition on the special permit.
I mean, I would think that if the dwelling met certain requirements, environmental requirements and engineering requirements, largely this falls in your lap and your lap. But if it met those requirements, then we could remove the restriction, I would think. And it would have to do with all kinds of things, like safety issues and insulation issues and heating issues and ventilation and, of course, water and septic. Probably some others I've forgotten.
Well, Bobby Afraidy's actually, and I, spent a lot of time trying to figure this out. Because we can't send inspectors back and see the wiring in a house, so what's, if it's insulated in the walls and stuff. And it became a big issue that obviously hasn't got resolved for 20 years. I get 10 years on the Board of Health. We finally took this approach because there's 400 houses, 300 houses coming online. What do we do? But we only can look at, you know, I try to stay in my lane. You know, they have year-round water, which they never did before. It was easy for us. You're seasonal, you don't have water all year. Now they have year-round water, so now we have a mechanism, they can upgrade their septic systems. That's all we look at. I can't say, I don't think, you know, your house wouldn't go properly because I can't hook in the walls, I know that. And that's kind of where we are. So our restrictions, and to be fair, I'm sure this house is all over town though. You know, in the 50s weren't built that great, but we don't make those people jump through hoops. So we've set up a system that any restrictions we put on, we can take off, but like, you know, Nate said, there's other restrictions out there that we didn't put on. And what are those people going to do? If they get year-round water, if they have a new septic system? That's all our definition says. You have to have water and septic in your seasonal home. So we've been going around and around with this. So we've taken the position that if you get year-round water and you put a new septic system in, we're going to let it be there year-round. But we don't have any way to say it's not insulated, it's not...
But it could still be, it could still be a one-room shack.
Exactly. On blocks. So we don't have any control over that. Because our bylaw doesn't say anything except water and septic.
That's where I started the discussion. I think bylaws need to be enhanced. Or completely changed so it all belongs to you and you don't have to deal with it.
Well, we can't, we can't go in over on building codes either. The Board of Health doesn't have any authority over building codes. So we can't go in there and say, we don't think it's built properly. So this grandfather didn't want it, it's probably, because, again, this has been a problem for years and years. I've only been on the board 10 years and it's been a problem way before me. But now we came to a head because all of a sudden, there's 300 or 400 people that's going to meet our definition of a year-round house as the water lines go in. So we can only look at what we did. We couldn't look at what everybody else did.
I think we should, excuse me, I think we should inquire what other towns have done. I don't think we're the only town that's faced this. I would think that Westport and Dartmouth and Plymouth and Boyham and Marion, maybe Marion. But any waterfront, any town with waterfront, I think is going to face similar issues.
And that's why we wanted to have a conversation with you folks tonight is because we wanted to get the ball rolling on it. And we'll start doing some homework. We'll see what other towns have for bylaws. It was my understanding that the only time a town creates a seasonal restriction is if they have a seasonal mobile district, if they have a shorefront community, that that whole community is seasonal. They do that sometimes, but typically not broadcast around town.
I, I'm going, I'm going back a little bit, Nate, but my recollection is that there is, there is or was a list in town. Rita had the list, I don't know, somebody compiled it. There was a seasonal list and it had to do with taxes. If your house was on that list, then you needed to have a conversion. And I know it created some grumbling.
That was specific to the folks that were on the seasonal water supply?
No, it wasn't.
It wasn't?
It was all over town. And what they did at some point, the best I've figured out, because I bought a house at the time, luckily it wasn't on the list, but I was ready to challenge it, they sent out letters to people at the tax bills saying, if you don't use your house all year round, you know, you can tell us, we'll put it on this list. And I think they maybe got a tax break. I'm not positive about that, but, but they got the people to say that. But it never got ratified by town meeting, nothing ever happened to it. And it meant nothing, honestly. It didn't mean anything. Because just because some people only get on there in the summers, I mean, maybe they were getting a tax break, but it's probably like the bottom line. If you, you know, it didn't make it seasonal just because you only used it seasonal. And my argument with Rita and Nancy at the time, Nancy was a Saltman, that's how long ago I had that conversation, they said, well, if they don't live there all year, it's seasonal. And I said, well, I just built Woods Edge. I said, there's five or six people that go to Florida every year. They don't use it all year long, and those houses are seasonal? And nobody had a real answer for me. So I mean, it's, it's been, everybody's been trying to chip away at this for a long time, and a house here or there happened, and everybody let it go. But like I said, now that they're getting water at the shores, it's hundreds of houses. We had to deal with, we got money to lend you for your septic, we're not going to look the other way anymore. You have water, you can put in a septic, and we're going to enforce it, but we don't have any control over anything else.
Certainly not going to resolve it tonight.
No.
But I do see what you want. But I do think this is a big homework assignment for all of us to dig into as a term paper there. Derek, Mr. Kim. I know you have some wisdom to pass.
Well, and I 100% agree with Bob. It was a letter, and this is Derek Macsue, once he'd written it. It was a letter sent to people that own those homes, asking them if they used them in the winter. And most of them probably said, no, we don't use it in winter, we just use it in the summer. And that's how they got tied to that seasonal list and never went to town meeting or anything. It never got signed by anybody. It was just compiled. So it really has some teeth to it. But the other part that I might want to bring in is, I think the ZBA also put conditions on the number of bedrooms also in the past, that if this goes there, that might need to be addressed at the same time. Because if they put a three-bedroom system in and you've conditioned it to two, what happens to that? Now the back for that as well? That's going to come up too.
We have a lot of work to do. It may not be wrong to start from scratch with a white piece of paper, just start over and redefine the problem. That may be a lot of work, maybe not. I still think we should separate seasonal from summer. I think there should be two parallel definitions, maybe with some difference in the regulations because seasonal doesn't necessarily mean summer. It usually does, but it may not. It can't be any of those.
No, again, the shores was easy for us to keep an eye on because they didn't have year-round water. The water company turned it on enough. They didn't even need D restrictions. You don't have water, you're seasonal. Period. That's a DEP rig. But now they're getting year-round water. So, I mean, they're hooking them up as we're talking right now.
Are there still shacks down along the water that have 55-gallon rooms in the ground as a septic system?
We hope not. We've, we've made some regulations that condition people that if you're getting hooked up to that water, you have to, because everybody there was a seasonal home. There's no question about they didn't have water. Didn't need a D restriction, you didn't have year-round water, you were seasonal. So we're having people either give us a plain Title V or we're giving them a year to put a new septic system in so they can hook up to the town water. But that's all we're looking at. So yeah, as they're hooking up, the water company is going through a cabin and we're getting, I mean, I think it's going to really help clean up a lot of stuff down there. But again, they could be a little shed built on blocks. That has nothing to do with us. We just got to make sure they got water, which they do now, and if they upgrade their septic system, which we can lend them the money to do now, we have a few million dollars. That's all the rigs that we have to meet with.
Right. No, I understand. Personally, I think that a year-round home should meet a certain minimum safety and structural requirements. But that's not our, that's not the zoning boards, don't make any thoughts.
My opinion is, I don't believe this belongs with this zoning board. What happens is when we put that restriction on, when we give the special permit and we say, there's a restriction on seasonal, and it goes on a D, they'll have to come to Bob and he can take it on. It doesn't cost them anything to do that. They can go and get it reviewed and all that. And they come back to us for our determination. It's going to cost them a lot of money. And, you know, I don't know if that's fair. It's like double work too, for one board and another board. So I'm not even sure what, you know, seasonal, I think we could take these out on the bylaw.
Nate, but these are your current bylaws. If you're doubting this, what's your intention? Remove these, the word seasonal, or take it out? What's your thoughts?
Well, we have a couple of things we can do. To Don's point, no matter what this bylaw's at, and we've been kicking it down the road just because it's a lot of...
For years.
And there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of open parks to it. But the way we define seasonal, summer now, is just a substandard septic. You could go around town and be substandard.
Most of these homes have been occupied year-round now. Why don't we just go back to the building and the sanitary code and leave it there? Why are we reinventing the wheel?
That's what town council had recommended. They talked about the bedroom restrictions. So if the ZBA does, you know, condition two-bedroom home, it really falls back on the Board of Health as well. You know, if you can design with new innovative technologies on septic design, and you can take what used to be a two-bedroom design, because it's a 20,000-square-foot lot, and you can make a three-bedroom system on it, that's really at the perky of the Board of Health.
Right. And then just put their ventilator on, their fast system, sure, they can make that work.
There is a minimum standard for human habitation as well. We look at these things, you need lighting, you need heat, you need egress components, you need windows that are operating, you know, for ventilation. So there is that standard as well that we can enforce through building and Board of Health. So, you know, we do have those provisions in place, but, you know, just to reiterate, you know, from a zoning perspective, and Don alluded to it, is, you know, subjects in which zoning can't regulate. One of them is the interior of a single-family home. The other is the frequency of use on a single-family home. So we can, you know, determine in a business district, you know, hours of operation, these type of things. But we ought not unless we have a zoning overlay determine the seasonal use from a zoning perspective. So we just need to figure out how to take off these D restrictions from the zoning Board of Appeals, whether it be by special permit. But that will only apply to special permits that have a condition of a seasonal. And, you know, the list that you were referring to, the list that I have, is 133 homes, and they were related specifically, you know, to seasonal water. And to Bob's point, probably from a taxation perspective, I remember the, you know, the salt that they were asking, you know, is it a cottage? How often, you know, but that's a taxation perspective. Because, you know, winter use, you know, it would be different than summer use, your point. How would you classify a house to be suitable for winter versus summer? Heating system, insulation, all of it? You just really walk him, you know, down a slippery path.
So you're going to propose a zoning bylaw change for the upcoming election?
Yeah.
It sounds like, it sounds like you want to propose, but the change you want to propose is to remove this, right?
With a provision by special permit to remove any condition that was placed by the ZBA on a, you know, previous special permit. But I think that it's important that I do the research and look at other towns to see if they have a seasonal bylaw.
Sure.
I also think that it's, you know, imperative that the Board of Health looks at this and sees what, you know, they can do. They have created all new rules and regulations relative to these type of, you know, conversions.
So a question that I'm going to ask town council through you, which means I'll ask, I'll ask that you ask town council. If a property owner comes to us to remove a restriction, is that treated the same way as a normal special permit? Or can we simply vote to do it here without having to advertise and put the addition to admin specs?
I'll ask that, but I expect that it's going to be a modification to a special permit requirement, public hearing, notification to a budget and everything.
My goal would just simplify it and keep it as inexpensive as possible to eliminate or reduce the cost of addition.
Yeah, I agree.
They can talk twice for free, we can't.
It is a special...
We kind of, through the zoning bylaw review advisory committee, we discussed creating language within the bylaw to terminate any pre-existing conditions relative to seasonal. So something like that may be possible. We haven't got legal counsel opinion on that yet, but for example, if you just wrote within the bylaw, you know, any conditions placed for seasonal use in the past are now extinguished in seasonal...
Are we due by the building inspector?
Something, yeah, to kind of brush it, because that's the same thing with zoning, any other zoning change. So if you're pre-existing non-conforming and we make a zoning change that makes you conforming again, then you're conforming. You don't have to ask anybody. So if, where it's a condition on a special permit, you probably have to create one or two sentences relative to this to say it would be extinguished or modified through special permit. This is some of the first discussions on this. We're going to hold public hearings, we're going to be speaking with the planning board, we're going to do a couple draft copies, we'll be back here, present them to the zoning board for, you know, input. And we're just going to try to hopefully work on this together.
Are residents or people who own these properties, are they going to be forced to hook up to the water?
No.
So if we take this language off altogether and they don't have year-round water?
But that falls under us though. Nobody's cleaning that up. Town people can't take off a DEP, so they can't take that off.
So a sale would trigger something, a change or a building renovation?
But even that, we've worked with the water association, this kind of got dumped on us, but we've worked with them because they really are people, they just come down here for a couple of months in the summer. And now, why are we going to make them get on year-round water? Why are we going to make them put septic systems in and do all that work that it really only uses them seasonal? And that's why we set something up with the water corporation to say, you know, give us a list of anybody. We told them we wanted people to be able to be shut off of that, of the people that are on year-round. So if they get shut off and they send us a list and say these people are shut off now until whatever the date is, March or April, from water, we're not going to make the people do that expense because maybe they inherited a cottage, they've been using it for 50 years and they don't have 50 grand to upgrade. So, so that was one of my big concerns again on my end. But to Don's point though, and there's two building inspectors here that maybe could wrap their heads around this. Obviously those weren't, not that any home in the 50s or 40s had, you know, any specific codes that they had in me, but obviously homes that were not built on blocks, you know, or some of the other houses, they, maybe they don't have heat, maybe they don't have a lot of those things. That was a concern I had, that maybe these houses have no insulation, maybe they only have two-by-four roof framing because they didn't care about snow loads in the winter because they weren't there in the winter. The roof fell and they put a new roof on. So that's something that we couldn't deal with because it's not my business.
Doesn't that mean falling back on a home and it sheds water off and, you know, during the seasonal, just like any seasonal cottage or anybody, it would, you know, would fall back on a home?
No, because if the association's not shutting it off, I mean, you can drive through there. I drove, we hired a consultant, Charlie Koenicki, who used to be the regional for DEP in this area. And I took him down there and we drove through and there's a water tank, there's this, like he, like he thought we should have shut half the place down. But at the time, a few years ago, when we were working on this, people had no options. I'm not going to get out and start condemning homes because the people had no options. Now they have an option. They can get water, town voted to give them money, we can give anybody a, have the zero interest loan almost to put a new septic in. Now they have options. And those people's houses that might have been sold for 50, 60, 70 grand, they can be year-round now. They've worked a lot of money. So a bank will lend you money to fix the house up. So, so I feel comfortable that the water and the septic issues are dealt with down there. My question to everybody else is, and I'm going to push to come to you guys because you have some, is, you know, do you have any other, if you guys want to, as we do these conversions, do you want to add any conditions on structural?
Is this a tool? I would say, I would say if the zoning, if the bylaws are going to retain, if we're going to retain any authority, we, the zoning board, are going to retain any authority over a conversion, that the bylaw should say that it must pass a year inspection. What is it you do for a new home? You have to inspect it.
For occupancy.
For occupancy. I think it should, I think...
None of those houses, I mean, you're going to run into a problem where you can't retroactively go back and make something upgrade. So I think that there's a legal fail-saw right there. So again, when they pull it or they permit or they do a house sale, then they get entitled to bring it up to grade. So I think if we remove these, I think we're on the right track. So, and then get it brought to council and then we'll look into it a little bit further.
And we're seeing insulation, oh, sorry.
That's okay.
We're seeing even insulation, it's a slippery slope because some of these old cottages, two-by-four, two-by-six rafters, you insulate them and now you've taken off the ability to melt the snow load off. So what we saw in 2015 is, you know, homes that massively gave in, threw a bunch of cellulose in the ceiling, now it's well insulated or better insulated, the snow built up on the roof and we had to collapse. You know, when there was, you know, hardly any insulation, there was heat loss, they were melting snow on the roof and there was no problem. So, you know, I always urge caution as to, you know, the unintended consequences.
It gets you one way or another. This falls bad on... Contingent upon a home inspection or a removal, it's a special, so they should be picking these stuff up at that point.
That's what we want to do, is when, you know, when there's an upgrade, we'll make them read the building code. And then I have a good chance to look at it, there's a license contractor involved, we can add additional supports, additional insulation, but it's a property sale or additions or renovations.
Well, I'm thinking, well, just use myself, I would not pass a, I don't think a Title V. Now my house is like 30 something years old.
I would neither.
So, I mean, for us to go and demand you need to upgrade my system now that it's working, it seems like we, you know, you could probably go through everybody's house here and find violations per code now. I don't think we should have that kind of regulations over the people down in Park Shores or wherever the seasonal homes are. I think that's kind of putting...
Let's find out, let's find out what other towns are doing.
Well, Janice, you're correcting that on your house, but your house, there's two times that we have people upgrade on a sale or in a change of use or an increase in flow. So obviously going from seasonal, we've got DEP involved. So if these people want to use their house year-round now, that's an increase in flow. We have the right to say we want you to upgrade the septic system. So we can't arbitrarily go around town and make people upgrade their septic systems. But in this case, you know, most of those, they didn't have year-round water. So it's obviously an increase in flow and it's an increase.
Well, I think the issue, the issue with this bylaw that has, I think, has not, we haven't really spoken of it, but it bothers a lot of us, at least it bothers me, is people buy a cottage, in the past, they've purchased a seasonal cottage and flipped it as a year-round house.
Yeah.
And it's not, I mean, it doesn't meet the requirements of a year-round, it just means what you would put into any one of those.
But I'm seeing that now. I see a lot, I have a similar situation in the town that I'm at, where they have a seasonal place that is year-round residences now. So what we're seeing now is that as they become sold and as they pull building permits, that these structures are being brought up to grade on the current codes now. So, you know, this will work, but it'll take a generation to deal with. So there is no differentiation in between seasonal and my code as well. So I think, I think you're on the right track, remove this, and then let's talk to council and lay out the legal options.
Nate, you've had your five minutes.
Thank you.
Is there anything else on this before we move on?
There's some of the homework that we discussed and we'll see if we can get back on another one of your agendas in the future. I'd like you to.
You might ask our friends at town council, what other towns they've worked with to upgrade and modernize the bylaws and you could maybe call those building inspectors and say, how's it going? What have you done? What are the pitfalls? What should we look out for?
Absolutely. But just like we posted tonight in the ZBRAC, you know, at our next meeting, I believe we'll talk about this. So if you guys would have posted, you know, and I'm sure Chris, the building inspector, he could offer some information, it'd be good, you know, anybody that had concerns, he came and we all talked about it again, you know what I mean? So if anybody just posts a meeting, we can, anybody can show up whenever they want and we can vote against the wall and see what sticks.
Or if you think of anything between now and then and you wanted to send me an email and say, what about this? You know, this is something I would sit on, I'd be happy to, you know, bring that forward.
There's no question, but that whatever we decide to do, there'll be some people who are unhappy with it.
No matter what we.
And that may include us in this room as well as the officials. Okay. Thank you. It is 7:35. Let's call 7:35. We're going to open our first hearing, which is Derek Maxey. So we will open the Maxey Simpson hearing. Like the zoning board of appeals, acting in force with Master and Ross, Chapter 48 is meant to conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, June 18th at 7:00 p.m. in the local public library for Creason Street upon petition of Derek Maxey and Amy Simpson. A special permit under 613 is requested to allow adjustments to lot lines in front of this 89 Crooked Lane and Wanta Cedar Berry Lane in order to improve conformance to bylaw requirements. This is as provided by the Lakeville bylaws. Now, before we dig into this, Derek, I don't believe that we can do anything more than to issue a finding.
I believe you can.
We can't, the zoning board doesn't approve lot line changes. But we can examine this from a zoning standpoint, a special permit standpoint, you're certainly familiar with all that from years past, and articulate a finding based on the discussion and the evidence and what we decide. Before we get to your discussion, I'll comment that we have a May 31st memo from the Board of Health. It says after reviewing the fishing for hearing in 89 Crooked Lane and Wanta Cedar Berry Lane, the Board of Health has no issue with petition this time. We have a June 6th memo from the planning board. At their Thursday, May 30th, 2019 meeting, the planning board reviewed the reference petition for hearing from the Board of Appeals, the board has no comments. And we have a June 12th memo from the CONCON that says the referenced property was reviewed by the commission with wetlands were observed on both properties. Since no activities are proposed, the commission has no jurisdiction on this matter. So now, having said that, I'm going to turn it over to you to tell us the issue.
Derek Maxey, Wanta Cedar Berry Lane and Amy Simpson is also there from Crooked Lane, neighbors. And what you have in front of you is an actual endorsed plan by the planning board for the lot line that's recorded with the kind of registry. So the lines themselves have been established, but the building commissioner just had, he wanted to just make sure that because lot one is an undersized lot, that we don't make it any more non-conformant.
Correct.
So in doing that, as you can see, lot parcel A is 1,756 square feet and parcel B, parcel A is actually currently owned by Miss Simpson and parcel B, which is owned by myself, is 7,159 square feet. So it's roughly six or seven times more. And it just kind of worked for both of us. I needed a little extra frontage for myself and she, she could not go below the area she was actually going to be giving to me, but I had plenty to give her back. So she got six times what, roughly five to six times. So we're not any more non-conformant, we're if anything, we're less non-conformant.
Derek, I need some more. I'm probably the only one in the room who's confused on where we are.
I'm confused on this as well. It's not difficult. We got, uh, what?
I'm trying to make it easier. I know. I have no idea.
So, if you're looking at the plan, I'm going to just, I don't know. So we're talking about the left side of the plan here. So lot one is Miss Simpson's property.
Yep.
Lot two, three, four are actually my properties. So on lot one, there's a parcel A that Miss Simpson currently owns down the bar on there, 1,756 square feet.
That little triangle.
Correct. And then a little, I guess it's north of that, there's a parcel B of which I own, which is 7,159 square feet. So we're just walking the two parcels.
So you're going to give up 7,200 square feet and take 1,700 square feet?
Correct.
Janice?
Yep. Well, what it does is it gives me the frontage and I need for mine to be built a lot, so. And what it doesn't do is it, it doesn't make her any less conformant, any less non-conformant on her, she has plenty of frontage, she still needs that 175.
Does she have the required square footers?
She didn't have it in, but she has, she's increased in her square footers now. She has one she got.
So the area that you'll give her in the back will give her the square footers that she'll, she'll need.
It won't get her up to the current, but I'll just.
But it's less, it's less non-conformant.
It's like a two-handed.
What about setbacks, front side?
She needs all the setbacks, her windows, everything, nothing in her life is going to get, make it more non-conformant.
So she has 205, what, 175 required?
Correct.
Which lot is yours there? This one, the weight, this lot?
Lot two.
The lolly pop?
Yes.
Sheep thing with the lawn?
And that's because of the, the 165 diameter circle that we have to have touching the frontage. She also needs that as well. It's a little lighter in color.
What's your intention with the future parcel land? Are you going to build on lot three or you going to subdivide that or where are you going with this?
Lot three, possibly down the road. I don't have any preference on it yet, but I'd like to be able to do something down the road. My currently outlook is just sell my house over the now.
And you're at lot two? Is that what the current dwelling is now?
Yes.
And you have, was that a common driveway or is that?
No, that's a private, that's.
It's a private driveway, right? So lot two, lot three, all are you, all common ownership, vagina parts?
Correct.
Got it. But the future would be to subdivide lot two, three and then to build on it? Is that, is that my?
Well, I mean, this is endorsed by the planning board, so it has been subdivided. Still common ownership.
So Amy is Crooked Lane and you are Cedar Berry?
Yes.
Cedar Berry, private road, executive road.
Private road.
Drive, five hundred.
Yes. It's just a driveway.
Just a driveway.
Because it's still on the five, five hundred, I'm saying.
Derek, what do you have for square footage?
On lot two?
Lot two currently?
Lot two currently is 8,221 square feet.
Oh, I see, I'm sorry.
Get away with the top.
Got it, got it. And when you chop out that 7,500, 7,200?
That's not even part of that. That's a separate parcel, so that's not even in it.
Oh.
So currently, right now, the situation is by lot two and three already can, they already got the square footers and, but they just lack that 40 feet of frontage.
So the future plan would be to subdivide lot two and three and make two lots?
They already, well, so they're already subdivided, let's sub there to this apartment. That's probably not what we said.
So just for the two lots though?
Yes.
I can't see a thing wrong with this proposal.
Yeah, just kind of.
I mean, it hurts nobody, it makes one, it makes lot number one closer to conforming, less non-conforming.
And Mr. Chairman? I just don't want to speak for Amy. That's all.
I'm sorry.
I don't want to speak for her, that's the only.
I would be good for everybody.
I think it's good for everybody. It's good for the town as well. Board members?
You able to say one?
Anybody present which is for or against? So we can't really issue a special permit, but we can issue a finding regarding our position on this. And that, I think that articulating the finding should be subject to a vote. Would somebody care to try and compose a finding and a vote? Mr. Maxey?
I'm not going to do that, but I just, just so the board knows, this is the steps that Catherine spoke with the town council and these are the steps that they said we should do. So I don't know if it's special permit or how they, as long as the board votes, I think that's all they care about.
Well, I'll make a, I don't know if you can call the motion?
A motion, you're going to make a motion to approve the request for the land swap based on a finding that the?
Took the words right out of my mouth.
That the exchange of, of properties, is that the best way?
Trampas.
Some sloppy.
Yeah.
The exchange of properties improves the, the conformance of the, shall we call it the Simpson property?
Slap.
Which is lot number one. And does, and does not impact the conformance of your property.
And actually makes this property more performant. Because he's giving me the extra frontage.
And getting the extra frontage.
Sure. Did you get all that, Kathy?
That's why she hasn't recorded. So David's made a motion to, to approve the request for a finding and it's articulated finding. Is there a second to David's motion?
I'll do it.
Joe is second in the motion. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, please?
Aye.
Chris? Chris is in favor, none opposed. We've taken the necessary steps. I hope this is suited. So now it goes to the planning board with our, with our judicial papers that we will, we will. So the planning board has to formalize the law.
So if you have, so they have formalized it, but I wouldn't be able to get a building permit until you guys have this decision. So the building inspector now has it to his ballpark.
Well, we have a judicial paper. And I'm sure that Nate will. We can close the Maxey Simpson hearing and then open the Peterson hearing. The Lakeville zoning board of appeals acting in force with Master and Ross, Chapter 48 is meant to conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, June 18th, 2019 at 7:00 p.m. in the local public library for Creason Street upon petition of David and Jeff Peterson, a special permit under 6.3.2 and 7.4 is requested to allow the construction of a 10-foot high fence that will be 90 feet and 16 feet long and 10 feet from Nelson Shore Road and Bedford Street as provided by the Lakeville bylaws. The site is located at 400 Bedford Street.
Good evening. Come on in. Who's calling?
And for the record, we have a memo.
Mr. Chairman, yes, please go to the podium.
Oh, okay. If you have to speak, you can go to the podium.
Thank you.
We have, it was a memo from the Board of Health that says after reviewing the petition for hearing from 400 Bedford Street, the Board of Health has no issue with petition this time. We have a June 6th memo from the planning board. At their Thursday, May 30th, 2019 meeting, the planning board reviewed the above petition for hearing from the Board of Appeals. The planning board requests the zoning board take into consideration the site distances along Bedford Street. There should be sufficient site distance so the safety of operations on the roadway or intersection are not affected, not adversely affected. And we have a June 12th memo from the conservation commission that says this property was visited on 61219 is located in the corner of Bedford Street and Nelson Shore Road. They want to install a fence along Nelson Shore Road. There are no wetlands in the area, therefore the commission has no jurisdiction.
Yes.
So could you illuminate for us, what did you want to do and why do you want to do it? This is 10-foot high fences?
Yes, that's our, the variance for the height difference for a token inspector. And it's kind of all from the corner of our lot to 90 feet down to where our back driveway stops. And then on the other side of the driveway will be the 16-foot section. The height reason is basically to prevent viewing of the pool we got put in our backyard last year and from our depth off the house it's up.
So this is a private space?
Pretty much, yes.
Will there be a gate as a second driveway?
No.
So you'll have an opening?
Yes. That's, Nelson Shore is a private road.
You want as far as the gate as far as the driveway goes. When the gate is.
No, I would see you doing boring houses. No, we're not doing anything in this present time, but I, we may think about doing something like that. But if we do, we discussed it, but putting in a gate, we would reset it into the driveway where you'd have to pull off the road to get in. That way we're not obstructing people from traveling. Because I know Nelson Shore is a very narrow road.
The, one of the issues that comes to mind for us that I think needs to be addressed is a 10-foot high fence is sort of like a great big sail and there's a lot of wind loading on it. What provisions are you taking to make sure that it's safe?
Well, I brought the thing to Mr. Don and where the fence is going to be, there's more natural structures in front of it on the side of Nelson Shore, there's trees, brush, that's going to break a lot of down. So if it did go that way, it won't hit the road, but, but the piers that are going to be holding it up is going to be two feet in the ground, poured concrete with steel fencing posts.
Steel.
Which is going to be fastened to six-by-six pressure-treated tempests. The fencing itself is going to be one by 10 by eight-foot lengths that are going to be slid down tracks that are going to be made into post themselves. So that was pretty much what Mr. Don had said. Be maybe the structural part of it, I mean, come into question, but by having a good ounce of fire and concrete with the steel posts, I mean, I'm going to deal with the fencing company down the street to go for a certain gauge that would add more support to them. If you have any other suggestions for structural?
You might want to consider opening or slanting so that you allow wind to come through.
The posts themselves?
No, the slats so that we can allow it to come through, but not, but not break yourself sideline, you're still getting privacy. So there are different ways to do that. Or the bad, stagnant, for example, like shades. So there are ways around that. So you might want to, you know, just confirm that.
But if you, if you, if you know the area all, there is a lot of trees and brush that keep the wind down. I mean, like that is a tunnel, the wind does come down, but when you're...
You should ten feet off the road, the height of the fence, it won't crash back.
Yeah, that's...
And then the other concern is the sightlines from Nelson Shore coming out on Bedford Street, so you would have to reduce any of that or keep it back to ten feet so someone can pull out.
Oh, actually, yeah, definitely.
So it's not a problem.
I mean, it could be, it could be ten feet or more, just, Mr. Darling said usually if you go that high, you want to come in twenty feet. And that's kind of taken off a lot, off my property, it's a nice area there, but we want to utilize it. And by doing this, we will be able to utilize it more.
As long as you deal with the structural and the sightline issues, I don't see a problem with that.
If, if we were to seriously consider granting the permit for this, would you object to a provision or restriction on the permit that would basically permit it for you only? That is, that if you were to sell the house and move, that the fence has to either come down or be reduced to, say, six feet?
That's no problem.
Seven feet would be good.
Seven feet is allowable, but go down, you know.
Seven feet.
Just we needed that extra height.
So I understand where a pool, this is a raised pool, above your pool, so you need that extra height there. Got it. Any other side of the table? Do you wish to make a comment, sir?
Yeah, I, I, I have a question, but I was pressed. Michael, Michael Tausca from Twitchwater Drive, my first question is, you mentioned on your plan, I first I thought your plans were very slimy and dry, no way to scale and tinder and something, but, but the provisions in there, not in the words. And you said it's ten feet from Nelson Shore Road. My first question is, is that, that's ten feet from the pavement, so?
Well, I can make this so it's ten feet from my property line.
I don't think, I don't know, I'm sorry, first question, I didn't want to go on your part, but instead, where is the property line, is where the fence used to be? Or it currently is, or is it ten feet?
There was never a fence in that area.
There's a fence, um, um, is your picture here is Nelson Shore Road?
So I, that's, that's a, a split rail fence?
The property line was, and that, the property line is closer to the road, I don't, that's...
I don't know, because the fence company put that in when they did the front of the house, they split rail fence.
Yeah, so what I question, well, because Nelson Shore Road, we're going to try to so, get the neighborhood association, not association incorporated, because you got four sub-issues on that road, and they may want to widen that part of the road, you know. It's only, I think it's twenty feet now, maybe, like what?
But he can only put the fence on his own property.
Right, that's part of my question, so, because the thing is, talking about, if we widen the road, and, and if his property line is, is where, with the, with the, with the fence right now, those trees could come, could come down, so that somebody's, they're being a sale. First of all, the trees should come down, they can put a tiny garden, who approved this? Eighty feet on the other side could come down regardless. I also question the board on some of the comments made, when you talk about the privacy. I mean, you stand down, look at that door behind you with the windows, ten feet is like top of that window, that's a heck of a high wall. You know, uh, it should have stayed, I guess it's been about two to seven feet recently, so I don't know about that, I thought it was six feet. It used to be six, it went to seven feet with the twenty fifteen, so it's, okay, so. I just didn't check my web, that was a few, so I just thought six feet. But to me, you know, and there's a reason six feet work, because most people are standing up. Six feet, ain't, ain't for the back, if I'm looking out at a six-foot fence, I can go further back, there's that, there's that diagonal there. I still can't see ten feet, if I'm standing across the road, I'm not going to see ten feet high anyways. Why do I need ten feet high to walk by? And this reason, and, and, and I just have the statute that he has a necessity for this fence. And the president is, is for the privacy, and he's digging right open from, I can walk by Route eighteen and see his pool, I can walk by his driveway and see his pool. So I, 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 I kind of question this concept of gaining privacy, and he has a lot of privacy. He has a lot of growth in that area right now. He has a tree stop, or, or...
I, I know you said it and I missed it, but how far onto your property will the fence be placed?
Ten?
Ten feet in, ten feet into your property.
Yes.
And your property line is probably ten feet from the road right now.
Probably not sure if it's ten feet.
I don't know, because I know my property, that's down Nelson Shore, it's skirt.
Lots of people don't realize that their property does not go all the way into the road.
Oh, no, I, we, we know that.
I know mine does on lots of down, because before they had the road done over, I mean, I'm not thinking of people down there.
We have to make sure that...
Because I haven't, I haven't surveyed it, and what is done?
We have to make sure that the fence is not only on your property, but there is enough, that there's enough of your property that you can comfortably walk down on your property between the fence and your property line for maintenance, for cleaning, for painting, for moving weeds, for whatever.
Oh, yes, we're going to clean that all up afterwards, but it's privacy right now.
But my point is that you have to move back away from your property line, so you still have legal access to the outside of your fence.
I mean, there's, there's good-sized trees there now.
Well, yeah. Something, something a lot of people don't think of, they put the fence right at the property line, now they find out they can't work on the fence.
I mean, the reason why I was trying to go where it is, because it, it breaks down that...
Are you positive you know where your property line is?
Define?
I, this, it was mine years ago when they did the road, but then, when the guys did the road, they took my post out and used it for, to retain.
Maybe we need to get a defined...
For the steel fence.
Steel line, yeah.
It was done years ago by me.
We paid to have it done, and then they had taken the stakes out, so.
Joe, you were going to say something?
Yeah, I think maybe we need to get a fine line, you know, ask somebody to, and, you know, do a survey on that one line.
We said one line, yeah, I agree.
So I mean, there is a right, I've looked at the property on, I think it's in the mortgage proposal on every block of ours. And it used to be an old fence post on the corner of Nelson Shore and Bedford Street. And it goes down to the corner of my property, which is a stone wall. And, because it's almost worrying, it's the reason I have that.
I think one of the requirements could well be that you have a surveyor who identify, absolutely identify that property line.
Like I said, they did at one time, but then the post...
Well, it has, you have concrete markers in the ground?
Nothing.
They, they don't stay them at the time. Like I said, this was going back before the road was resurfaced.
Well, that's still have it, if you have, if you contact that surveyor, he still have those information, so. Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to make a motion, if you want to attend, if you, you still want to have a public hearing?
Well, I should, I have more comments.
Okay.
You know, so obviously, one of my comments would be, going to address in there, about the clear between the fence and the property line. If you want to find out a four inches or five feet, whatever you want to find it at, but to find from their property line, I think that's, boy, get out of there, just approve it as written. And, I, I hate the question, I just did a quick web search today about how far around the post should be, and this is a quick read website. They were saying, uh, one-third to one-half the post height, which meant that should be three and a half to five feet deep, and they show like two feet for the steel post.
They don't show anything on their plans, they're just showing for them, they don't, they don't have the dimension on that.
Yeah, you get the dimensions, they actually mentioned on their, on their thing, they would have put the, uh, each post, they both, the concrete, the post, the rest two feet concrete.
They just say this.
So that's the height, and he's always concerned about that, or wind issue, they all...
We don't regulate that kind of thing, I think we leave that up to the contractor to do properly. He's not going to put it in, he's going to have a contractor do it, aren't you?
I was going to do it myself.
Okay.
I was going to pour the concrete, and they're going to anchor bolt it.
Then I think that we, that I think we would require that you have formally prepared plans approved by the building inspector.
Building that anyway.
For safety purposes, in order to get your building permit.
Building that, and he'll see, he'll check the window, and then he'll check, you know, the exposure, it's a B O C exposure, so all that will be considered.
See, that was the only thing, Mr.?
Well, Nate will check.
I'm trying to keep the neighbor happy.
Yep.
So, but Mr. Darling had proposed, that would be the only thing that the board may say is how structurally you might want it.
I, I don't want to do the engineering, I don't want to do the engineering here, I want to make sure that it is, that it is done. And it is, it is approved by the person who's approved to approve. And, and, for the right person to approve. And that gets to your point.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with your comment about...
We raised the issue of safety, it was the very first thing we talked about, a ten-foot-high fence is a big sail on the wind. And, and you began to talk about it, the two-foot footing is a bit shallow, I, I trust what you said, a third to a half, I think is probably reasonable. But I, again, we're not the experts, I think Mr. Darling would have to take a serious look at that. I don't think we're going to say, I, I don't think we're going to require certain specific things like a five-foot footing. I think Mr. Darling will tell you what's needed, honestly.
And you tell me what you want done, and you have more to do?
I have another question, I mean, obviously, we need to do homework. And so you can go ten feet somehow, I don't know where that ten feet came from, why ninety feet would work and ninety and a half feet. I was wondering, is, is ten feet not too many, or are you losing the sightline?
You know, first, do you want to write that ten feet from? I'm standing on my deck, and I walk and see where someone has seen me. And I went up there, and they held a ten-foot pole, and I put an orange mark across it, and I stood in there, and I had my wife see if she could see.
Yes.
And I personally could walk through. And I tell that, I mean, I, I don't know what I, direction is, I mean, I'll talk about these things.
So, because obviously, I feel unfortunate, I feel as if I'm going to the neighborhood for the, that, that tried to walk over, I mean, I understand your concerns.
We've lived here almost thirty years.
This time of year, you wouldn't be able to see it because of the overgrowth. The only, my only question was, in the wintertime, when everything dies off, you'd be able to see it.
But you're not going to do a lot of storming in the winter, is that right?
No, no, I understand, but it's going to be there.
You might, but, I mean, what else do you have, sir?
That doesn't mean your concerns, I understand your concerns, uh, I still have, hate to say, I should object on aesthetics, they have pointed by noise, that's not going to count with the board.
Right.
But, uh, you know, I, I would hope you, your comment earlier about the shifted panels for the windows, that's a handy thing.
We, we can't regulate that here, per section three, that's why the building council will pick that up, who can sit around? We, but, but we are responsible to, to...
So I'll put that in my motion.
We are responsible to ensure that the plan meets sound engineering, and those are the words right from the bylaw. We don't have to define what that is, we just make sure that it's covered and that, that Nate will put the numbers necessary, whether it's three and a half or four, or a five-foot footing. Or if you go down the street to the fencing contract or...
That's why the provision went, I mean, at the time he was too busy to be doing this, and then it went through a whole process, so we had to go...
I do agree that two-foot footing, just, this is just a gut feel.
You're very good with the third glass.
Seems shallow, particularly when we get a lot of rain and the ground starts to get wet, you know.
It can be deep, but, I mean, that was just off the top of my head, right?
Okay. Do you have anything else for you, sir?
No, I just...
I don't think nothing would wipe it, so. I don't think anything would wipe it.
No, it would be stained or painted a natural color, so it'll blend in, and we'll use it on, say, ground or something like that.
You want angel water?
I think that's right.
I'm just trying to, I got to shoot the fat line.
No, we don't want to cause any problems, there was one, at all, we just want to ensure safety.
There was one thing that, again, I don't think I heard clearly, and that was what you planned to do to it, ensure proper sight view at the very end where Nelson Shore Road meets Bedford Street. Were you, were you planning to step from a ten to a six to a three foot?
No, this is ample, what, are you talking about cars coming by or people?
Coming out to the front.
Where the wall is going to be, this ample, from my driveway, so I can see both directions, for casual pedestrians. That is, that is on Bedford Street that has one. It's tapering to meet up with a split-rail fence which is at the fundamentals.
Can I ask one question on that? So if I understand correctly from your diagram, you won't see the fence going on Nelson Shore Road, not go past the finite fence right now?
Right now, I have a split-rail fence that goes across the fundamental.
Won't go past that one?
No, this will be...
And I would love to step from this, that's, that's, that's what, the ten feet back off the road.
So it's what, if they want to block the side of the street in case they want to do a cutting, I'm saying that.
How much space width, how much of a margin do you think you would need on your property between the defined property line, however it's defined, and the fence? How, what width of space, five feet?
What, blockway you're talking, in front of the fence? Well, the reason why you're kind of going where it is, is because of the viewing.
No, no, this is, this is to give you access to, to repair, maintain, fix your shrubbery, your lawn, the fence, while remaining on your property, so you're not trespassing. In other words, you don't put a fence on your property line, you move it in from your property line.
Correct.
How much in do you want, do you think you need to be from your property line?
I'm telling you, I think a lot of it, this day and now is my property.
Now, somehow, we're not connecting, we're not communicating.
We don't.
Somewhere, you have a property line along, in front of your property line, that's Nelson Shore Road.
Okay, yep.
How far in from that property line you propose to put your fence?
Well, ten feet from...
From your property line?
Well, well, it's, yes, exactly. Well, I'm, I'm going off ten feet being roughly where Nelson Shore is. That's not going where the property line is, I understand. But if I can determine where the property line is, I can go ten feet in from there. Hopefully, it's going to clear.
You want to be, you want to be X number feet in from your property line? X number feet back onto your property?
I understand what you're saying, yes.
And I, I'm trying to figure out what that X is. Ten feet is usually, ten feet?
Ten feet is usually a good sightline, and it's also the height of the fence, if it falls a little bit, doesn't go on Nelson Shore.
Ten feet is okay with you.
Right.
Who wants to make a motion?
All right, I think I got this. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion to accept the proposal that's submitted with the following conditions. That you confirm with the survey, with a lot of my names, and you need ten feet from the property line before we do the construction. We just talked that. The sightlines, it's considered per the Highway Department, so that there are no obstructions to, people entering from Nelson Shore, onto Bedford, and vice versa. And then the construction and maintenance per the Building Commission, so there is some structures and also the maintenance, something that's to blow down, you'll have to be able to repair it. And also to be removed at the sale of the house.
In other words, the absurdity permit goes with you only, does not go with the property.
Is that right?
Well, when you go back here.
I don't, I don't know about the wording on that.
Okay.
Because if somebody wants the fence there, but they just cut it down, reduced three feet to make it...
Sure, or to be reduced to seduce.
Okay, yeah.
How's that sound? So revise that last to be removed at the sale of the house, or to be reduced to seven feet. Or, or, well, that's split hairs more, huh? Or the new property owner comes in to ask for a special permit.